Great, I will call the Wednesday, April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Essex Junction City Council to order. Are there any agenda additions or changes?
We do not need an executive session.
Okay, okay, do we need to? I guess we can just remove. Seven C. So I, do I have a second for that? Second, excellent, great. All those in favor say aye.
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 Alright, so it's just seven A and B. Public to be heard, this is the portion of the meeting where members of the public can bring comments, concerns, questions to the board, we may not answer those questions today, we may opt to get back to you at a later date. We ask the folks keep their comments to about two minutes. And address the chair, so we will start in the room today. Is there anyone in the room that has any comments or questions? Hi, come on up, sorry, if you come up to the chair with the microphone right here, and if you don't mind introducing yourself.
Sure.
And thank you for joining us.
My name is Linda Hanson, I live on Hiawatha Avenue in the junction. And I've lived there for over fifty years. The traffic safety has been an issue as long as I've lived there, both at arrival time and dismissal time from the school. As you know, the budget pass, which means Summit School will be consolidated into Hiawatha. And my understanding is that's going to be a hundred plus more students and families, drivers. So my concern is that the safety issue is going to be worse. And I did send a picture one day to Marcus, I believe, of cars trying to go up at the same time people coming down. And I happened to be walking home with my four-year-old grandson. And it was in the wintertime, and I slipped and fell and lost control of his hand. And he went out between two parked cars and almost got hit because there was a car coming down. I'm not faulting the people who are driving, but I will tell you, they're not doing the speed limit, they're not being careful, they drive on my lawn, they park in my driveway, and I'm not alone. The concern I have is not just on Hiawatha Avenue, it's also on Nama Avenue, which is right around the corner. And parents are starting to park there, the kind of the runoff, if you will. And I'm also concerned about the exit at Hiawatha School that goes out to West Street. I understand, or I've heard through the grapevine, and I don't know if it's your, you folks that are in charge of that, but there's been talk of widening that road and making it two-way. Actually, there's been talk of making it two-way without widening it. I see that as a concern for children's safety, as well as any adults that are around. I'm coming to you because I didn't realize that you were the folks that I should come to, so I voiced my concerns to the school board and the superintendent, but I, they, I basically said that you folks are kind of in charge of the traffic issue, so.
That's interesting.
So that's why I'm here, not to complain, because I appreciate everything that you do, being on the city council, I'm sure it takes a lot of time on your part. And I appreciate that as a resident. But I am, like I said, very concerned about the safety piece, and I had an idea, and I know it probably wouldn't fly, but I know at Five Corners, they have an officer on duty at, I believe, arrival and dismissal. And I didn't know if there was any way there could be an officer based at Hiawatha during the arrival and dismissal time. And I mentioned that because the principal of Hiawatha actually sent out a letter to all Hiawatha families, reminding them about the parking rules and the traffic flow and et cetera. And she voiced that there was no one there to enforce what she was asking, she was just hoping that people would do it in good faith. So I bring the officer piece up. That's really all I wanted to talk about is, you know, the safety piece.
I'd be happy to, I think we emailed the fact back and forth as well, a few months ago when you, when you sent that. Be happy to talk to you about it further, I find it interesting, the school board directed you to us. Because our inclination would be to direct you to the school board. But realizing that that puts you in a very awkward position, I would not do that anymore. You know, we've discussed it here in brief, we don't typically get into back and forth during the session, but any modifications to the property, like widening the road or coming up with a different exit, that's school property.
Okay.
It's not a toss.
Right.
We can ask, and we did, if they would consider it, and we, I believe, received much the same response you did. So there are other avenues available to you and the families there, such as a petition, or other ways to pressure them to take this as seriously as they should.
Okay.
I'm hesitant to say that you should do that to another board, but I understand that this is fairly serious. And having issues like that in my own neighborhood with some other, some other things, I know it can be frustrating.
Right, and I know, you know, the Hiawatha Avenue residents, it's not just specifically to them, because I'm sure the high school, when, when they're having arrival time and dismissal time, I'm sure it's very busy. Summit School, ADL, you know, so I don't think we're unique. But I just, I guess the thing that kind of put me over the edge was the fact that my grandson almost got hit by a car. So.
Very understandable.
But I really appreciate you listening, and, you know, I don't have a problem with going back to the board, they pretty much know who I am now, because I've been going to their meetings since January, so.
I think, yeah, and I think, I think there's opportunity there to kind of find a solution. I don't know how quick it would be.
Okay.
But I think it's, I'm going to predict it's difficult for us because we don't, we don't really control that property.
Right.
I certainly think the officer there is an interesting idea, the school, I think, if, I could be wrong, but I think the school funds that. Make it tricky.
Yeah.
These days. Might also be, you know, so, but I appreciate you bringing this to us.
If, if there was a traffic study to be done, is that something that would be the, the school district's thing too, or?
Yeah, I mean, we can, we've got staff who could help go and observe from our perspective and provide any guidance, and we've have offered that, are happy to offer that again.
Okay.
You know, in fairness to the school district, they're going through a couple of changes on the staffing side of things right now, too. So I imagine it's very difficult for them to kind of do this big change that they've got, and really kind of work out the finer details of the changes once those go into play.
Right.
But we, we are happy to help in any way that we can, but Raj is correct, it's, it's not our, our property in the sense of trying to do something actually different on the property itself.
Okay, great, well, thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and if you need anything more from me, he lives around the corner from me, and he knows where I live, so he can come find me, and Marcus lives up the street, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll alternate a little bit, Katie Ballard online.
Thank you, I apologize if my camera's off, my internet's being wonky. I just wanted to come tonight and bring up the fact that the city of Essex Junction still doesn't have a functioning housing commission. That's been an ongoing concern for a number of years for me, as, as a member of the Joint Housing Commission, we worked really hard on some of the conversations before the separation, and so I just wanted to come and put it on your radar, I know you have a retreat coming up. So I just would hope that housing and maybe the housing commission conversation could be on that. And I know myself and the other members of the city Housing Commission from the past have offered to, to help and have offered to support, and I continue to offer that support if there's anything I can do, thank you.
Hi, yes, come on up, please, just introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Ella Rusin, I just wanted to introduce myself to you all because I'm the new reporter at the Essex Reporter, so if you didn't know my name or my face, here it is. Raj, I know you're leaving and that you'll be here, so. I'm glad that I can introduce myself to everyone collectively who will be here in the future, but yeah, I won't be able to make it in person to the reorganizational meeting, but I'll be making it to hopefully many meetings in person after that, and whatever I don't attend in person for, I'll definitely watch online. If anyone ever needs to reach me, my contact info is on the Essex Reporter website.
Thanks for joining us, thank you. Is there anyone else online? Was it just like it, anyone in person? No, alright. Oh, Marcus, yeah, you have something to read.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, so I received an email just before the meeting and was asked to read this statement for, during public to be heard, so thank you, Raj, for giving me just a moment. This came from Debbie and Roger Curtis, they both reside on Hiawatha as well. "We are so very concerned about the traffic on Hiawatha Avenue and surrounding streets. With the additional families from Summit Street, I have lived here on the street for seventy years, so have seen many, many changes over those years. The traffic now at times is extremely dangerous. Do you realize that drop-off and pickup times, no emergency vehicle could get through the traffic? People don't move, park any which way, and drive fast for, for an amount of children that are trying to cross the street. Marcus and Tim, you both live here and know exactly what I'm talking about. What can be done about this? The school board says Hiawatha has a good flow. Please, when you, when I can't get out of my driveway or cross the street with my grandchildren without my heart and my throat as we step into the road, I see no good flow. People park on our lawns, in our driveways, shake their fists at us, or worse, now we have heard there will be between a hundred and a hundred and eighty-five students coming. Add that to this street, and let's pray no one has fire, rescue, or God forbid, one of us maybe have power or gas company working at our homes. How do the residents get help with this problem?"
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to the public hearing on the Stormwater Utility New Ordinance Twenty-One. Chelsea Manigot, Water Quality Superintendent is joining us, I think this is the
Forty-fifth.
Public hearing, Chelsea, on this general.
I think it is. I think it's four, but it's up there. Thank you, and to that note, I was planning on actually skipping a, a portion, a large portion of the beginning of this presentation because it has been done four times. If that's all right, it is in the packet for anyone to refer to.
Sounds fine to me.
Good.
Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Looks like everybody's ready to do it.
Great, so I will scoot on down to what's changed since the last public hearing, and it's we've, we have some, I can actually start with this slide. So we did do some budgetary number estimates, which I can explain further in, when we talk about this as a business item, but this slide is providing estimated fees. So in the example, right now, we're estimating one ERU is going to be fifty-four dollars and thirty-two cents for a single-family resident residential property, and then that would be that amount, fifty-four thirty-two, as a reminder, would be what equals one ERU, so then for anything that's non-single-family residential property, you would take that dollar amount and multiply it by the number of equivalent units that has been assigned to your property, and so in this example, a commercial property, it's twenty ERUs, about a thousand-dollar bill. And then we also have an example of a tax-exempt property, so. So the lion's share of what's happened since the last public hearing is the credit manual has been changed. As a reminder, the credit is for, towards a stormwater fee assessed for your property, you will have to apply online or through the mail to myself. And it's only non-single-family residential properties that are eligible. You cannot get more than fifty percent credit for a stormwater fee assessed to your property, and at a minimum, you do have to pay whatever the rate is going to be for one equivalent unit for that fiscal year. So we've added a few categories to the credit manual. These three were what I've already presented on, we have the stormwater treatment practice, so that's anyone that has stormwater treatment practices on their parcel. They must be operational maintained, and the better you do at improving water quality, the more credit you will get. Then we have MS four and TS four permit holders, so that's anyone that has a state, well, federal slash state stormwater permit. The specific program is called MS four, TS four, that's capped at thirty-five percent, and that's set by state legis, legis, legislation. And then we have the education credit, which is for the school properties. If they can demonstrate that they are teaching about stormwater or water quality, they can receive credit on top of any other category they might be eligible for. This next slide is summarizing the newest categories to the credit manual that have been added, so we have the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, which is really complicated word for federal permit or a state stormwater permit. And so these are, this is recognizing parcels that have a federal state permit requirements for stormwater management or water quality benefit, and we are providing a credit to recognize that work at ten percent, regardless of how many permits you might have on a parcel. And there will be an annual submission of reports to verify that you're still in compliance, and that's actually the same for most of these credits here. And then we have a combined sewer credit, so if you have, this is really targeted to, it's only for Global Foundries, but parcels that have a combined sewer system, which that carries both sewer and stormwater through the same network of pipes, and then that is treated at a wastewater treatment facility before discharging to a local waterway, you will receive a credit for that, and there's a formula, a formula that's going to be associated with that, and it's based on the amount of total impervious area for the parcel. Well, actually, that is treated through the wastewater treatment facility, divided by the total amount for your parcel, and then that's how we determine the percentage of credit that will be received. As I just mentioned, there are going to, or, I, there can be periodic inspections of the parcels to make sure they're in compliance with these credits by stormwater staff, and the recertification annually, just to say that you're in compliance with your state permit, or you're still teaching about stormwater, or that your stormwater treatment practices are functioning. So because of that, we did have to change the ordinance that is going to establish the stormwater utility, chapter twenty-one. And the thing that has changed since then is under, we do talk about the credit, the ability to obtain credit in the ordinance. And it was pretty specific by mentioning what credit categories existed, so that actually has been removed, so we have greater flexibility of adjusting the credit manual in the future, because it does not require a public hearing. And so that has just been edited to just read, to refer to the credit manual. So what's next, after tonight, if this is all approved, I will be sending out credit applications to non-single-family residential parcels, and they have a month to apply, or almost a month to apply back to me. And we are, this is going to be a one-time date for this system, because we need to be, if we need the credit applications to come in in order to apply it to the first year bills. After that, deadlines for credit applications are the first of a calendar year. Then, on June eleventh, city council meeting, we'll be setting the ERU rate for the utility as part of the enterprise budget, fund, budget process, and then the first round of bills will go out in October of this year. And there's my contact info.
Is there anyone here that has any questions on this, or anyone online on Zoom that has any questions about this, for the public hearing portion of the evening? Not seeing anyone in the room. Not seeing any hands. So I will go ahead and close the public hearing portion. Chelsea, thank you, if you don't mind sticking around for the business item, which will be in a few minutes. And so six A, this is up.
So, thank you for all you've done. Marcus, I believe, has the honor of reading through the resolution.
Resolution and appreciation of Raj Chala. Whereas Raj Chala was elected to the Village of Essex Junction Board of Trustees in April twenty nineteen, and whereas Raj will end his term as a city councillor on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, concluding eleven years of dedicated service and leadership to the village and city of Essex Junction. And whereas during that time, Raj held the role of Vice President of the Board of Trustees and City Council from May twenty twenty-one to April twenty twenty-three, and whereas during that time, Raj held the role of President of the City Council from May twenty twenty-three to April twenty twenty-five. Whereas Raj was instrumental in both the merger and separation initiatives between the town and the village, and whereas Raj was a key contributor to the establishment of the new city, including budget development and support of the two Lincoln renovation. And whereas Raj led the council during the long-awaited Crescent Connector Road project, and whereas Raj contributed to drafting cannabis regulations for the city to permit dispensary businesses while ensuring they were located at a sufficient distance from school zones to protect children. And whereas Raj was a member of the Bike Walk Advisory Committee from October twenty fourteen to June twenty nineteen, and whereas during that time, Raj held the role of Chair of the Bike Walk Advisory Committee from July twenty seventeen to June twenty nineteen. And whereas during that time, Raj was instrumental in cycle de mayo. Just kidding, just kidding, cycle de mayo. The marking of signal trigger, signal trigger locations and successful application of our bike-friendly community ranking. The encouragement of bike-friendly businesses and the slow ride events. And whereas Raj consistently demonstrated a calm and rational leadership style, and his inclusive nature was clearly reflected in the way city council meetings were run, and so resolved that the city council on behalf of the staff and citizens of the city of Essex Junction hereby extend our most sincere appreciation to Raj for his commitment and dedication, years of service to the residents of Essex Junction, adopted this twenty-third day of April twenty twenty-five by the Essex Junction City Council.
Thank you very much.
We also have other thanks, teacher from Ricky, you saw a plaque. And folks.
Oh, very nice, sequel, that's lovely, thank you very much, appreciate it. Sure. Alright, so it's no surprise I wrote something brief, but I wouldn't have been able to ad-let this. So I've thoroughly enjoyed serving this community, and I'm grateful for the support, advice, patience, and camaraderie from all of you. I also want to thank Andrew, Dan, and George for being so gracious and patient with me, an opinionated impatient newbie who graded at how long everything took to get done. I've learned, but not accepted, it takes an average of about ten years to get anything done. Regina, I think the city made the perfect choice three years ago, and I'm so grateful that you agreed to join us, and that you agreed to stick around. You've got quite the group to manage with us. But I'd also like to thank our amazing city staff, many of whom have weathered years of uncertainty and turmoil as we explored merger and separation. It's one thing for residents, I think, to discuss those topics, and quite another to have to worry about how your career is going to be impacted from, and we did lose some excellent employees along the way. The last six years have been a roller coaster, merger, pandemic, separation, transition, charter changes, so many issues, large and small. It's been exciting, frustrating, satisfying, I really believe the city's better off now than it was six years ago, when we were in some in-between limbo of mock-independence. We have an exciting future, and the city is full of energy, our downtown is busy, we're welcoming new residents. And those residents are bringing new ideas and new expectations. While I realize change is difficult, it feel, and it feels like the city is changing fast, I think this group will handle this graciously and with the community in their hearts. I think it would surprise people to know that we really don't agree on every issue. But we work hard at building relationships that allow us to trust each other and get the work done. And that's not always easy, and sometimes it feels like it's near impossible. But I never felt like we didn't respect each other, so I appreciate that. And in the spirit of George Tyler's farewell from a couple of years ago. Oh, yes.
Here it comes.
Oh, yes, where the departing member opines on a potential future project, and borrowing from some pretty epic brainstorms from the past, I'd like to offer that might be a good idea to try to dome over the fairgrounds, I mean, just imagine like what we could do if we domed over the noise that cut. That was a joke. Because I might not have heard that. I did not actually mean it. But I've thoroughly enjoyed this, and it's been way more than I anticipated and way more than I ever expected, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Raj.
Thank you, Raj.
Alright, let's. Thank you for that. Oh, yeah, does anybody have any comments they'd like to make on this business item? Andrew Brown.
If I may.
Yes.
I'm thinking about.
Did you come with a mic?
Rules still apply, Andrew. Hi, my name is Andrew Brown, I live in Essex Junction. Just for the record, Raj, as you had said, you definitely came in here with a lot of fantastic ideas, as every single one of us does. We have so many great things that we want to do, and then the unfortunate local government glove comes off, slaps us in the face, and says, yeah, no, you don't get to do any of that. And you handled all of that with grace, with dignity. I personally learned a lot from you when I was sitting in that chair. One of the things that, when I think about coming into the, coming into the trustees, coming into the city council, while we have all these great ideas and we think about what our legacy might be, I would just say, for me, when I think of the, the Chala legacy that this community will benefit from, in part is how you've dispersed the leadership among the city council. One of the things that you did that I think is incredibly cool, that does not happen in many other communities, is you've offered to have the Vice President join you when you meet with Regina to talk about what is going on in the community, to build these agenda items, and to really help lead the city, and that type of dispersed leadership I hope continues beyond your, your tenure here, is that's one of the things of when we think about trying to build the bench, when we think about trying to engage people in the community and prevent what at times definitely personally felt like Andrew running the show to ensure that there are multiple voices at the table. So when we think about all those principles of dispersed leadership, of selflessness, you definitely embodied all of that. Really appreciate your, your time in that chair, sad to see you leaving. But I know that your, your seat will be filled well, thank you for your time, Raj.
Appreciate that. Alright. Okay. Seven A, discussion and consideration of the Stormwater Utility, New Ordinance Twenty-One, and Stormwater Credit Manual. And Chelsea is back to break it down to earth. So, as we said earlier, fourth public hearing, some very brief changes.
Yep. I think the only thing I want to highlight that's in the memo is that I did work with Jess, and we went through each parcel and applied what we think a parcel might apply for, for a credit, to get a that, to develop what more realistic ERU rate would be if we, these parcels do apply in the next month here, so that is how we came up with a rate. Also, to note, it is, it's a, without the capital transfer, which we agreed upon and approved last last meeting, and a ten percent allowance for non-collections, that's all that's factored into that calculation. And then that, just looking for approval of the ordinance, which will officially establish the utility. And then also, even though it's not necessary, but I think it is important, is approve, approval of the credit manual, because that is not necessarily directly tied to ordinance, but we are looking for approval from you all on that. And so you'll see the recommend, recommended, recommended motions at the bottom there. If you're ready to approve, otherwise, if you feel there's another amendment, we can do this again.
I suggested, oh, so good.
Yeah, just want to clarify. Yeah, just want to clarify one thing. So that, that ERU rate, like Chelsea said, that's, that's an assumption of we are assuming certain properties are going to apply for a credit. We'll play that out over the next month and then your actual budget with the actual rate will be presented in June.
And when the, we mentioned, you mentioned capital briefly there. There's $125,000 in this budget that's not being included this year. So next year there will be an automatic increase to that ERU.
Yes.
Adding that expense back in, which will have an impact and that rate will go up regardless. Just to say that out loud for the. Any questions from Marcus?
I just wanted to bring up the one, the one piece that stood out for me and the new, and the, and there's very few. The change that stood out for me was again, and I totally understand why we're doing this in removing the credit categories to give us that ability and flexibility to, to make these alterations. But you know, as you said in your presentation too, that also removes that public hearing step. And again, I totally understand that, but I wonder if if we're making, if I'm okay with us having flexibility in making changes. I guess my concern is if all of a sudden we, the city decides that we're going from a 50 cap to a 20% cap. Like it feels like that's a moment that we need, we should have a public hearing or have the public in here to participate in that discussion versus just having the flexibility to make that change on our own. So I think, I think of it in one direction.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a good point. I think that really we pulled out the specific types of permits that other properties have that can qualify for getting a credit. That was really the change that we intended to make so that we're not tied to that. Particularly because I think the state is still working through all of this stormwater permitting and I wouldn't be totally surprised if they come up with some other permits they'll add into the, into the scheme. So the, just by not listing those specific permits in the ordinance itself, we can have a little bit more flexibility. I will not say that we would never do something like changing the credit down to something like 20% in the future. I just think it's highly unlikely that we would do that anytime soon. This is really just trying to get this program up and running and seeing how things go with the credit manual itself. And there's nothing that prevents us from doing a more involved engagement process if we are going to change something more specific in the future. And you know, to some extent, just because we call something a public hearing doesn't necessarily, and we put a little legal notice in the newspaper, doesn't necessarily mean that's getting people's attention. So I would think in the future, if we do a change that that's, that is that drastic, we would go through the same process we did this time in terms of particular outreach to the larger property owners that are going to be really affected by a change like that.
Yeah. And to your first example, and I know I agree, I think in the same, in the same way, like if, if we were to decide to remove categories, that, that's where I start to go. Okay. If the state adds things in there, that goes in a different direction for me. So it's a matter of what is the impact on the community with them, whether it's a positive or negative and how that, and I agree with you from the standpoint of what a public hearing kind of means and how people engage in that. And that is always going to be a concern. It's the level of engagement. But I, I think it's also the perception that we gave that opportunity to the public for, for them.
Generally speaking, policies and procedures generally come to us anyways if they're changed. So like I look at this like the the general utility policies that we have that we approved. So I would say if, if there's any changes, it would come to us in the consent agenda as an example, and we could always move it to the business agenda item and then decide to have a public hearing depending on what those changes are. That would be my suggestion.
See, anyone in the room have any comments or questions on this before we move forward or anyone on Zoom? Not seeing any hands raised. Just give it a second. All right. So there's packet page 23. There's two motions. If we're ready to proceed.
Would you like them together or say individually?
I think we can do them together.
I move that the city council adopt the Essex Junction Municipal Ordinance, Chapter 21 Regulation of Stormwater Utility. Additionally, I move that the city council approve the establishment of the Stormwater User Fee Credit Manual.
I'll second both. Any discussion? All those favors the eye? Keep looking at the screen for Amber. Motion passes unanimously. Chelsea, thank you. Four was the key there.
Thanks, Chelsea, for all your work on this.
Appreciate it.
Glad we don't have to come back a fifth time.
I bet you can.
I'll be back with a better price budget, so it won't be long.
Take care. All right. Seven B, discussion plan for city council retreats.
Okay. So Ashley is on vacation, so I'm covering this topic. So we have talked about this retreat for quite a while with the new strategic plan and how we really want to have a more robust process for the, for the council to think through priorities in the springtime. This will give us an opportunity to both give you some insight on what we've been able to accomplish and where we are at, at this point in time, as well as give you an opportunity to talk about what priorities you would like to set for the next budget that will be prepared and presented to you in the fall. So we've put a draft agenda here together for you and we already have the date set on June 4th. We, at a staff level, we are recommending that we facilitate this discussion. I think it can help to both allow staff to participate, participate, but also not be biasing where those priorities may, may go. And the other thing I did want to just point out with this is it's, the retreat concept is we would be doing this work collectively with the council and the department heads. But I do want to be clear, the, the priorities and where you want to go at the end of the day is very much the council's direction and purview. So I think a facilitator can help us make that clear, but also if this process works well for folks and we do this sort of dot voting or however we vote, I think we would be very clear and particular about what the council vote is so that it's not watered down by the department heads participating. And following this retreat process, the concept is that staff would take that direction of where you would like to go and try to think about it with a little bit finer look and think through what we can achieve or what we can't achieve without greater resources. And so we can have more discussions if necessary before representing a final, a final budget. That's the idea. Open to any thoughts, questions, suggestions.
Can I, can I start with, can we invite Brian up to the table?
Brian, if you'd like to come up to the microphone. And the reason for those, for those at home that were doing this is Brian will be joining the board on May 1st and has a definite interest in this conversation. Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you. Hi, everybody.
Brian Sheldon. Anyone have anything they want to kick this off with?
Well, let somebody else go first. Everybody want to jump in? Good.
I don't want to start. I can. I think this is great. I think this is great and I look forward to it. I would like to propose that we also add a specific portion post 1145 for the city council to have just a, a meeting amongst the five of us essentially to talk about some core ideas might be in public engagement, roles and responsibilities of the council themselves. And break these things down a little bit more that we haven't talked about at like a rework level. I don't know what that means at this point, but that's just kind of the general thoughts that I had and not if anybody else add to that.
I gotta take the day and might as well use the whole day is kind of where I'm at. Right? So like 1145 sounds all great and dandy, but if I'm going to make the most out of the time I'm, I'm taking, you know, I want to make the most of it. So yeah, whatever that time is after 1145, even if it runs two or two thirty or whatever, and it's a conversation for us to have a dialogue independently, I'm a hundred percent for that.
Brian.
I don't have anything to add to what Amber said and I agree with Amber's pitch.
I'll simply say that I think from where I, how I'm feeling about this right now, I do feel that there is potentially a full day's worth of, of conversation to be had, not all of it and not require, I think requires staff to be there. Especially not the department heads. I think that there's, it's a great idea to have this department head discussion and participate in this way. Thinking through some of the things that come to mind that I, I think I would like to be able to talk about with the council as the, just the count. And again, this is not, this is public. This is not executive. This is public discussion, but with the council not including all the department heads and everything else. I'm not quite sure if it, if that time would fall first, then the department heads or post department heads. Cause I feel like some of the things that are top of my mind would be a part of the discussion on strategic direction. And then there's other things that I think impact us differently. So I feel like some of it would leads into the discussion that we would have with the, with the department heads that would include the department heads. And then there's another thing that just doesn't, that, that's what comes to mind for me. But I am also.
Are you?
Taking the day off, so I'm prepared and I've been prepared.
I just see a little there and it's clarity. Are you like suggesting a time in the morning first for that, and then the department heads to come in and then time for us after then?
Open to that.
Like a sandwich, like a department head sandwich?
I'm, I'm open to that. I think that, you know, and Amber, I heard you give a couple of examples of things we might talk about. And I'm not quite prepared to like, here you go. Cause I don't know. I want to start that public discussion right now. But I think prior to that, over the next couple of weeks, we can share a couple of ideas with, you know, with the chair, with the president and, and try to, or with Regina Howard, this works. But anyway, we'll work it out. We'll, we'll put those ideas together and maybe then we'll have a better idea of how we should lay out the day. But I, I am thinking that this is a day as well.
I do think that there's, as I was thinking about some of the specific things for us to talk about, I do think there's going to be some overlap too. Just, I don't pretend to remember the work plans and all that stuff out of, off the top of my head, but I do think even like just public engagement probably is somewhere on Ashley's, I'm going to guess. And so there might be some, some overlap between those conversations just in that first part of the, the retreat. And then whatever we don't cover from a specific like, hey, it's great to have the department head person here to talk about that. Then we can cover that piece in the afternoon.
Right.
But I do think, yeah, flushing out exactly what we want to talk about so that, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause I think you know, if, if any of the other topics do end up being work product needs, staff, resources of any kind, way, shape or form, that's the, that's the idea. We've got to be thinking about that holistically in terms of what we've got the resources to do and what we don't. So, yeah, but understand that these conver, it sounds like you want to look, to have some time to get a little bit more in depth on sort of topic things as opposed to just kind of this brainstorming, voting exercise that we've kind of have going on for the, for the prioritization piece. So I get that and that, that makes sense to me.
I would also say again, this is not to, and I want to make sure that I'm really clear. This is not to exclude you or anyone else, but understanding the burden that puts on staff to be there and participate. I think it's great to have this department head piece. But I do also believe that we don't necessarily need to have staff in the room as long as we're technologically set up. I think we can, we can drive our discussion, you know, forward. So then again, we're not overburning you or any other staff member to be present for the whole day.
Yeah. And I think that makes a ton of sense for department heads. I think for me, if you're talking about how you're running your meetings and how you're doing your work, I should be there.
I just. I'm excited to see this happening. I'm disappointed, not in any direction. I'm disappointed it's not happening while I'm still on the board. I've been hoping it would happen sooner. Totally understand why it's, why it's where it is. It's not, it's not criticism at all. Regina touched on my, my first thought, which I shared with you this morning, which was, you know, looking at the structure, just ensuring that, you know, this visioning is largely what the council is sort of responsible for. And so while I think it's amazing and really great opportunity to have department heads and have this process sort of laid out the way it is, I'm that dilution of that potential washing out of council comment and council voice in this, the way this process will run as a charrette concerned me. So I think, I think she had an idea this morning of like, maybe councillors have a different color. So I, I'm encouraged that, you know, this could be a cool opportunity before you all get together to have these larger conversations to kind of see what other people are thinking and get a really immediate refresher on the issues everybody's facing, the challenges, their direct comments. And then you can go off really informed and at the end of the day, it is still resource available, still the council's call on what those priorities will be and what they will be. And I'm saying that somewhat for us, but also for everybody else that's listening, just, you know, it's that's one of the chief things this board does. So I'm glad it's finally happening. I'm excited to see what kinds of it. And the whole process, I think, I didn't quite envision it this way. I didn't know what to think it would be. But this idea of having the work the city does identifiable, get to a place where it's measurable, getting it to a place where you can identify where that happens in the city budget and how to figure out whether that's successful or not. I think this is just another step along that way. And I'm excited to see over the next five or eight years kind of where this ends up, because I think that's going to be really useful for residents when they, when they think about, you know, what they're spending and how we're, what they're voting on for a budget, they can really look to hopefully a resource somewhere that's central and say, you know, oh, look, that's what the city did. And maybe we're even figuring out a way to measure how they feel we delivered X or Y. And kind of where that's going. So I think this is really a really cool development. It's going to take a while to get, get it fleshed out and perfect or more perfect. But yeah, great.
Yeah. Continue to be an evolution for sure.
Do you need any decisions? For any, it doesn't look like you do.
No, I think that's great.
And this is at CBE on June 4th, right?
Yes.
Anybody have anything else? Brian, did you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
Nope.
Okay. Thanks for being here. Okay. Anyone, there's no one else in the room? Anyone online have any questions or comments on that business item?
Actually, sorry. I'm just going to, I'm not positive that we have CBE for sure happening that day. Not entirely sure.
Still.
Location. Yeah.
I am not seeing any hands on Zoom, so I will move us on to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the consent?
Can I just add something?
Yes, please.
So the liquor licenses had two pending approvals from the police department. Just wanted to let you know that on tap has been approved. Just wanted to let you know that on tap has been approved by the police department at this point, um, the approval of Hornets Nest would still be pending PD approval, um, before that licenses, uh, issued.
So I will move that we approve the consent agenda with, what do we need to pull it? We don't need to pull it.
I don't think so.
Okay. With the Hornets Nest being pending police department approval and AP. That makes sense.
Sure. Go second.
Excellent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Honestly, manager, come, manager report, council comments.
Um, I don't have, uh, too much. Just want to let the community know that we have done, um, uh, some data analysis on the traffic lights at five corners and how all of those things communicate with each other and we'll be, um, working on sort, sorting through some changes for the lights. So, uh, more to come on that. Um, I think that's it.
Great. Anything for anyone else? Well, once again, thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Raj.
I will be in two weeks. Maybe, maybe online. Maybe when I pull a permit for the dome.
Compromise the pool?
Compromise the pool. Wouldn't that be awesome? I will be here.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.